I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of May the 5th, El Cinco de Mayo, 2020. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Councilmember Moats?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Here.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Here.
Madam Clerk, could you please give an announcement on the protocol for this evening's meeting?
Pursuant to executive order, the executive order issued by Governor Newsom on March 17th, 2020, this regular meeting of the City Council will be conducted telephonically and broadcast live on the city's website and on Comcast Cable Channel 23. If you are watching the live stream of the council meeting and wish to make either a general public comment or to comment on a specific agenda item, please click on the link provided on the online agenda at cityofsantamaria.org to register for the meeting webinar and participate live and provide your verbal comments. Once logged on, in the questions box, provide your name and the agenda item you wish to speak on. If there are additional items of interest you wish to speak on, just raise your hand in the webinar portal. Once the comment period of the item is called, your microphone will be unmuted and you will have three minutes to speak. For staff and guests participating remotely, please use the Raise Your Hand feature in the Zoom meeting to be acknowledged to speak.
Our first order of business is a proclamation, and Councilmember Soto will be making the presentation. Just a reminder that due to the current situation, the city will be doing honorary proclamations until further notice. Proclamations will be presented during the meeting and then mailed to the recipients. Ms. Soto?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This proclamation is in honor of Compost Awareness Week, where as the composting councils of Canada, Ireland, Australia, United Kingdom, and the United States have declared the first week of May to be the annual International Compost Awareness Week. And whereas the City of Santa Maria wastewater treatment plant has established a regional compost facility with Engle and Gray where the city's bio soils have been composted since 1993, transforming organic waste into a beneficial compost product. And whereas the City of Santa Maria Soil Waste Division developed a successful green waste collection program, diverting green waste from the landfill, conserving valuable landfill space, and utilizing these valuable composted organics to build healthy soils and plants. And whereas this year's theme, Soil Loves Compost, was selected to highlight the importance of compost in returning organic resources to the soil as an environmentally responsible means of erosion control, conserving water drink drought conditions, reducing water consumption, and non-point pollution, and as a proven method of decreasing dependence on chemical fertilizers. And whereas the City of Santa Maria and Engle and Gray Inc. have created a partnership to serve the recycling goals of the Central Coast, and Engle and Gray have successfully taken organic feedstock and composted the material for sustainable landscaping, horticulture, and agricultural practices. Now therefore, the mayor, Alice Patino, of the City of Santa Maria hereby recognizes the week of May 3rd through May 9th, 2020, as Compost Awareness Week in the City of Santa Maria in appreciation of the efforts of the composting councils, extension agents, homeowners, landscapers, farmers, recyclers, public workers, composters, gardeners, and plant growers everywhere.
Thank you. Typically Bobby Engel would be here representing Engle and Gray, and he would be bringing his flowers in a cute pot, but he can always bring them after it's over. He can attend the meeting.
I think I'm going to go out and pick mine up. I really enjoy those.
Yeah, I know it. And the city's been collaborating with them for many years, so we'll make sure that they receive the proclamation. Next, we have another proclamation, and Councilmember Moats will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and this proclamation is for Public Service Recognition Week. Whereas Americans are served every single day by millions of public servants at the federal, state, county, city, and tribal government levels. These unsung civil servants do the work that keeps the government functioning and helps make this nation exceptional. And whereas public employees take not only jobs, but oaths to put the public first. And whereas many public servants, including police officers, firefighters, and others, risk their lives each day in service to the people of the United States and around the world. And whereas public servants include accountants, clerks, analysts and engineers, planners and librarians, attorneys, inspectors, laborers, computer technicians, and countless other occupations. Day in and day out, they provide a vast array of services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity. And whereas without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. And whereas while in uncharted territory with the coronavirus pandemic, over the last few months, these same public servants quickly adapted with creativity and flexibility to keep providing essential services to our residents with heightened sensitivity to unique needs, resiliency to persevere, and a collaborative spirit. Now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognizes May 3rd to May 9th, 2020, as Public Service Recognition Week in the City of Santa Maria, and encourage all residents and businesses to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city.
Thank you, Dr. Moats. You know, it's really sort of interesting because I think everyone and all of our employees are working. They're just working out of their category, out of their job description. And I know that we have, our librarians are busy answering the 211 calls. A lot of them are for the food bank. We have some of our recs and parks people that are driving the food because the food bank didn't have drivers, so they're driving them to wherever the food's being distributed. And so they're just changing. I know some of our recs and parks people are going to homes to visit some of our students in the San Maria area to make sure they're in school and to see if they have needs. So they're all out there doing something that's a little different. A lot of them, how many do we have working from home? 170?
Close to 200.
Close to 200 working from home. So I guess those drills are the preparation for an emergency that we had certainly have come into play. Probably never thought we would use them, but we are. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Moats. And the next proclamation will be given by Councilmember Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's a great privilege to read this after spending 39 years of riding around in police cars, 36 of them here in Santa Maria. So with great honor and pride, whereas all the promises America offers, none is more precious or elusive than the right to be free of crime. And whereas the dedicated men and women who have chosen law enforcement as a career face extraordinary risk and danger preserving our freedom and security. And whereas during the week of May 10th through May 17th, National Police Week, I missed a line here. Whereas the dedicated men and women who have chosen law enforcement as a career face extraordinary risk and danger preserving our freedoms and security. And whereas during the week of May 10th through May 17th, 2020, National Police Week is observed in order to recognize horrendous work, or excuse me, hazardous work, serious responsibilities, and strong commitment of our nation's peace officers. And whereas in conjunction with this important observance, the City of Santa Maria observes May 13th, 2020, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in commemoration of those noble officers who have tragically sacrificed their lives in the line of duty. And whereas five California police officers were recognized as being killed in the line of duty during 2019. And whereas these special observances provide all Santa Marians with the opportunity to appreciate the heroic men and women who have dedicated their lives to preserve public safety. Now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognizes the week of May 10th through May 17th, 2020, as National Police Week, and proclaims Wednesday, May 13th, 2020, as Police Officers Memorial Day in City of Santa Maria, and encourages all residents to remember those individuals who gave their lives for our safety and express our appreciation to those who continue to dedicate themselves to make Santa Maria a safer place in which to live. Witnessed, where Alice Patino has placed her hand and caused the seal of the great city of Santa Maria to be affixed heretofore on this fifth day of May 2020. And this will be mailed, and I just want to say that if, most people don't attend this, but I had an opportunity a few times to attend the gathering, the memorial gathering up in Sacramento, and there's literally thousands of police officers. Have you ever been up there?
No.
No, it's just, it's tremendous, and you stand at attention for, I don't know, an hour plus, and they do a great ceremony. It's really a process. Part of the process is just getting there. The police just kind of take over I-5. There's just, you know, there's just hundreds and hundreds of police vehicles you see heading towards Sacramento. So it's quite something to see, particularly if you're in law enforcement. And hours that we have here in Santa Maria is recognized throughout the state now. That started right out here in the front lawn, right here underneath the flagpole, I don't know, 30 years ago now, and it was started by Bob Ramos. Bob Ramos started it up. The first meeting of that was held at my house. It was kind of a clandestine meeting, and we didn't know whether it was going to get approved or not, but Bob came up with that idea, and it's grown into one of the most recognized memorial services and group of people in the entire state of California. So great pleasure.
Well, it is, it's really, really nice the way it's grown, and I was back in DC for the Peace Officers Memorial Week, and quite by accident. And I stayed in a hotel, I'm thinking, how come there's all these police officers here? And that's what it was. So Rick Sweet and I had gone back there to lobby, and so we went over to the memorial. And you see all these uniforms and the patches on the sleeve from all over. There was even Mounties there. So they're from all over the world and all over our country.
Right.
So it's really something, if you've never seen it, it's really something to see.
Quite a program. Thank you very much, Mayor, for allowing me to read that.
Thank you, Mr. Cordero. So, and the next proclamation will be given by Councilmember Soto.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This proclamation is for Water Awareness Week. Whereas the City of Santa Maria maintains a robust water awareness and conservation program that includes community outreach, schools, school education, complimentary home water visits, and suspected leak notifications. And whereas the Utilities Department, along with other water purveyance in Santa Barbara County, annually observe the month of May as Water Awareness Month to emphasize and encourage the wise use of water. And whereas every industry, business, and resident can make a difference by conserving water at work, home, and school. And whereas residents of all ages and businesses and industries of all types are invited in and encouraged to take advantage of the numerous tips and ideas to save water every day. Now therefore, the mayor, Alice Patino, the City of Santa Maria, hereby proclaims the month of May 20th as Water Awareness Month in the City of Santa Maria, and encourages everyone to make water conservation a continuing way of life.
Thank you. You know, every year we have a poster, did we get new microphones? A poster competition at all the schools because we do a lot of outreach, and it's really fun to see the kids come and they have their posters all over, and so it's really nice. They get a lot of recognition, and unfortunately, that didn't happen this week, this year.
Yeah, and I love seeing the commercials when, every time I'm at my mom's house, the Telemundo commercials on conserving water and just the importance of keeping our environment healthy and safe.
I got a couple of emails today, and one is that tomorrow, May 6th, is National Nurses' Week, Nurses' Day, I'm sorry, Nurses' Day. And this is also National Teachers' Week. How appropriate beings that we, these are people that are at the front line, really, really doing a lot in their community. And I guess I want to say thank you to all the nurses, the doctors, all the people that work at the hospital. There's more than just nurses and doctors there, and there's technicians and the people that help so much, and a thank you from this community because you're doing just a great job. You think about the grocery store clerks and the people that have to stock the shelves, and all the truck drivers getting all that, all the toilet paper to everyone in all the stores, and our bus drivers here in the City of Santa Maria that transport people to work. There may not be a lot of people, you know, on the buses, but there are people who need to get to work. And I try to tell people, we have a lot of essential services here in Santa Maria because people are complaining to me that there's too many people out there and they aren't at home. But we have people that work, that were designated as essential workers by our governor, and so I want to thank all those people that are willing to do that because it's a scary time for people. But thank you. The next item on the agenda is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, would you please read the criteria for the public comment portion?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction may be given to staff. However, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. Once the public comment period commences...
Okay. Do you have any requests to speak?
It looks like there's one, possibly one attendee here. Let's check in.
Okay.
So is anyone on the line that would like to speak? If so, just please say your name.
Okay. So that concludes the public comment portion.
I'm sorry, we have one written comment, too.
Oh, I'm sorry. Written comments? Go ahead.
So Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, staff received one written communication for public comment from Mark Rademacher, asking the council to vote no on all tax increases and allow the public to attend council meetings in person again.
Thank you. So, okay, that concludes public comment, and moving on. Mr. Stillwell, did you have any comments you wanted to make at this time?
Not at this time, no, thanks.
So moving on to consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read the item number three?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion, and these items are discussed only on request of council members.
Thank you. Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion? Okay.
Madam.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Waterfield.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve all the items on the consent calendar. Check it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve everything on the consent calendar. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Now, next, oh, Mr. Stillwell.
Real quick, before we go into the presentation, so thank you, Madam Mayor. So the item 3C that the council disapproved was confirming the local emergency orders and actions taken by the Director of Emergency Services, and I want to report orally at this point, and we will bring that item back updated periodically, probably monthly as different actions are taken for the council to be aware of and to ratify. And since this was published, we also issued an order to ban street vendors, including flower sales, because they are an essential service and are not able to comply with the health order.
Okay, thank you. No comments? Okay. So next, we have an update on the coronavirus situation. Mr. Stillwell, would you like to do the introductions?
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is another presentation we have at each council meeting to update the council and the public on events related to the coronavirus coordination and pandemic. And as usual, we have members from the hospital here today with Sue Anderson and Dr. Robertson. And we'll also have Fire Chief Leonard Champion to be able to discuss coordination of the efforts and the city's involvement. And then we also have Brian Olmsted from the county to discuss efforts with the county. And also online, I should mention, we have Bobby Young. He is a principal at HDL, which is the statewide sales tax consulting group, and they gave a presentation to our Economic Development Commission Friday before last, and it's a good statewide view of the economic impacts that cities are facing, and I think it would be helpful for us to be able to look at that information as well. So we asked him to attend.
Do we need to bring out Kleenex for that one?
It's, yeah, it's no information we aren't already aware of, but it's interesting to see the trends and the impact statewide.
Thank you. Okay, Chief Champion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council staff, and viewing public. Happy Cinco de Mayo. Thank you for this opportunity for allowing me to update you on the coronavirus situation. So I will begin with the review of the Public Health Department's dashboard that's available online. This is an updated metrics for where we're at dealing with COVID, and it's done daily right around 5:00. So it's a great resource to go to and find out how we are doing in the county. Another little piece of information is this is now available in Spanish. So you can go to espanol公publichealth.org, and the entire website will be in Spanish. So you're viewing up on the screen right now was yesterday's numbers. We just, prior to coming to this meeting, got an update. We are now at 544 cases in the county. 442 of those have fully recovered. Now specifically in Santa Maria, we have 158 confirmed cases, and we're averaging about five to seven new cases per day. At our last meeting, there was a question asked about how are our city employees doing? Do we have anybody that's been affected by COVID? And so since then, we have had one employee that has tested positive. They are under a 14-day self-quarantine order right now. Two employees that were in contact with this employee are also being tested out of precaution. One of those test results have come back negative, so that's encouraging, and we're still waiting for the result on the second. On this next screen, this will, I'm sure, be talked a little bit more in length later on in the meeting, but today was the first day that we are doing some testing in the county, community testing, and it's here at the Fair Park. So here are some criteria. This testing is available to all residents in the county, but there's going to be a little bit more of a priority for certain individuals. So you can see that healthcare workers and first responders, persons 65 years and older or any age with a chronic medical condition, residents living in a congregate care facility, persons that are essential occupations, and there's a list of what those occupations are, and any person that is exhibiting one or more COVID symptoms. Those will get higher priority over others that do not meet any of those criteria. So that testing started today. It's occurring five days a week. It starts at 7:00 in the morning through 5:00 in the evening. They're able to test about 132 residents, and it is by appointment only, so you can't just walk up and get a test. You have to go online, you have to register, and it takes about 10 or 15 minutes to actually register and get an appointment. Later this week, Santa Barbara City will be doing the same type of testing and make it available on Thursday, and Lompoc will be doing that on Friday. So there will be plenty of opportunities throughout the county to have people get tested if they so wish. Next, as we deal with this, and this has been brought up before, about how this is affecting our families and affecting people staying at home and just that, we need to remember that there are a lot of resources out there. And so here are a few of those resources that I wanted to list and for the public to view. Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse, there's a number there. Of course, Santa Barbara County 211, that is a resource that connects people to health and human services information, similar to like, resources like food, transportation, housing, healthcare, and senior care as well. The food bank is also a tremendous asset and certainly is one that is getting overwhelmed. They have seen a huge increase in need and a need in volunteers as well. Public health is another great resource to go to to get information about COVID, and I know this was also brought up at a previous council meeting, is reaching our MISTECO population. And so they have five PSA videos in MISTECO that address how you're dealing with COVID. So that is encouraging to see, and they're continuing to get that messaging out to that population. Our city website is another great resource. Mark Van de Kamp, our Public Information Officer, has done a tremendous job in keeping our website relevant and updated. And off this list, I want to make sure that our chamber is recognized. Our chamber and Glenn Morris has done an excellent job in reaching out to our community and providing resources for help for our residents and our businesses. And finally, actually second to the last slide, we're talking about a recovery plan, and I know we are waiting for some direction from our governor and from the Public Health Department on what that might look like. But our city manager has put together a good cross-section and a working group of our community to react to that. And so as that news comes out, then we will be able to partner with San Luis County, maybe Ventura County. So collectively, as a region, we are responding to, as these restrictions are lifted, that we're responding to them collectively. And then finally, we are always on a guard and prepared for the next emergency. And so we can't ever forget about being prepared for earthquakes and other disasters and fires, and so that is something that is still in the background but is at the forefront as well as we're working on. And then lastly, just I'd like to end with, you know, things that are going on in our community that are a positive influence. And I know there was a lot of support and recognition for our healthcare workers, specifically Marion Hospital and all the nurses, doctors, and staff there. And Mayor Patino, I know you just recognized that. And so we had a wonderful event, barbecued, I think, 1,800, 2,000 barbecue sandwiches to law enforcement, ambulance personnel, hospital staff, and it was just a great, great event. We also are seeing a lot of needs from the food bank, and they're doing a lot of wonderful work out there. And so if there's anybody that is looking to volunteer, looking to help out, you can go on their website, sign up as a volunteer, and go deliver food to those that are unable to get out, that are unfortunate and are still in need. So that concludes my presentation, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, what's the phone number that people would call in order to set up an appointment to have their testing done?
So you can go on the Public Health website, and through that, there's a portal that you can log into, and then that is how you will register to get tested for COVID.
I've got the phone number right here if you want it. It's 888-634-1123. You know, Chief Champion, we have in a community where a lot of people don't have access to a computer, and you tell people to go online, or a lot of them, if when they're over 65, they don't know how to do that either. That's really a challenge for people in our community. And I know the people that plan these things in Sacramento and San Francisco don't understand that quite often.
Yeah, and I believe the signage around town helps. There are numbers for people to contact, so you're right. That's a great, great point.
Yeah, they need the phone. Thank you.
An additional question, Chief. I want to get these numbers right because I have a show in the morning to do on this. You said they can test like 132 people a day? Is that what you're saying? Is that what you said?
That's what they're reporting, yes. I think maybe by the end of today and tomorrow, they'll be able to confirm that, but that was their initial estimate.
So it's around 130 a day? And that's from what time to what time again?
7:00 in the morning till 5:00 in the evening. And so that's by appointment only.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Soto.
Thank you. Thank you for the update, Chief Champion. My question is regarding the employee that we had and their positive test result. How were other employees informed? I'm concerned, not concerned, but I just want to make sure that we're being transparent with our employees. And are we sending them, you know, updates via email on a regular basis, just letting them know, you know, these are, this is what's happening at the county level, here, at home, and within each one of your departments? I just want to make sure that there's transparency and that folks don't find out via the media, right, that one of their colleagues has been ill.
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Soto. So in regard to notifications and being transparent, we really have to be careful about HIPAA rules and guidelines. And so predominantly, Public Health is involved in that notification and the tracking and tracing of where that employee has been and been in contact with. And those notifications are made based on that, that data and that research. So we're not trying to hide any information. We're trying to respect privacy, but also make sure that anybody that's been in contact with this individual that would fall under the definition of, of an exposure is found out and they're notified, so that they wouldn't find out through the media.
Right, right. No, and I, and I understand the whole importance of privacy and HIPAA, but I think just letting folks know, you know, like, hey, one of our own has come ill, please stay safe. Or here with you, if you have any questions, our door is open. I think that would be really helpful.
I know that information was shared during one of our weekly meetings, our virtual EOC meetings, and the department director notified everybody, all the other department directors, about that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Stillwell?
I think we can continue on with Dignity Health and receive an additional update from the health service, the health sciences as well.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and City Council members for having us back to give you another update. Another week down, I think we're on, what, week seven or something of our COVID pandemic for this area? The way things are right now, still very constant within the hospital. We're able to take care of everybody that has come in. We're continuing to see some COVID-positive patients come in and be admitted, but it's not overwhelming, thank goodness, at this point. We have plenty of beds, plenty of capacity. You know, today was, every day brings with it new things. And today was an exciting day because we had a couple of our patients who have been in ICU. One of them has been there 44 days, and they were transferred to a unit we set up just in the last week for longer-term care, for post-critical care care. And those patients are being moved to a rehab unit where they can start working to get stronger and better and be able to get their lives back. And two patients went there today and were cheered along their route between the critical care unit to the rehab unit. And so it's an exciting time for the whole hospital. We've also had many of our patients get discharged and be able to go home, which has also been very exciting. Right now, we have good supply of personal protective equipment. We've been able to do much better over the last couple of weeks to get more protective equipment for all of our staff and for our physicians and everyone. I think as Madam Mayor said, this week, tomorrow is National Nurses Day, and next week is National Hospital Week. So it's a time for us to kind of celebrate the hospital and what it means to the community. The community outpour support has just been incredible. The event that Chief Champion talked about was just so incredible to see everybody from CalStar helicopter, helicopter operators, to fire, police, ambulance, all of our first responders and all of our hospital staff, just really give a cheer for everybody that's taking care of our community. It was really a wonderful event. And right now, we're at a place where we're really starting to reopen things in the sense that it's time to get people back on the, on track for their surgeries. A lot of people, if you think about it now, have been waiting six and seven weeks to have surgery. And although they may not have been critical, they're in a lot of pain. They may need the surgery for diagnosis purposes or other things. And so we're starting those back up again, starting today, actually. We did many surgeries. All those patients are being tested prior to going into surgery, so we'll know if they're positive prior to, to the surgery. So that's exciting. All of our labs and radiology centers are also open and back, so people can have the radiology exams that they've been waiting for. So from that standpoint, we feel good about it. We are ready to move as things move within the community. We can, you know, downsize things as well as we, as increasing them. But at this point, I know there's a lot of patients out there that have been waiting a while and are very happy to be able to get going again and get into, to have their surgery taken care of. So that's happening this week. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Scott Robertson, who is our Chief Medical Officer and also President of our Pacific Central Coast Health Centers. And he can talk a little bit about what's happening on the outpatient side.
Thank you, Sue, and good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening, Dr. Robertson.
And city council members and city staff. And so just a couple of comments. One of the things that's been very evident to us is that many patients in the community have a sense of fear of coming to the hospital. And so we've seen patients delay essential care, life-threatening medical conditions where they've had a sense of fear of coming in. And so it's very important for the public to understand that hospitals, even in a time of non-pandemic, are taking extraordinary precautions to prevent any type of transmission of communicable disease. These processes have been heightened, obviously, over the last couple of months. And it's very important for folks to understand that we are doing everything in our power to ensure patient safety at our facilities, at our hospitals, at our urgent care centers, and our physicians' offices. And it is safe to come in. If you're having a medical condition that is life-threatening, please call 911. Please come into our facility so that we can get you the appropriate care. It's also important to understand that all of our physician offices across the Central Coast and those here in Santa Maria have remained open during the pandemic. We continue to see patients. We continue to offer virtual care through video visits as well as in-person visits. And we've started to see some return of some of these patients into these offices. Our urgent care centers, including those here in Santa Maria and in Orchid, remain open. They also remain as a source of community testing for those who may be suffering symptoms of upper respiratory illness or other symptoms that could be attributed to COVID-19. And so it's important to understand that those offices remain open and available to the public. Also, with regards to, to testing, an important aspect about testing, as testing expands, we see the Public Health Department doing some additional testing in the community. But the, the issue of contact tracing is going to be very important, being able to tie any positive cases to those folks who maybe have had close contact with those patients. And so I would ask that the city council be an important advocate for us at the county level in terms of making sure that our community here in northern Santa Barbara County has its needs met with returns, resources for contact tracing as the, the testing capacity expands over the next few weeks.
I have a question, Sue. How many people do we have in the ICU now with COVID-19? Right now, today, we have a total of 13 patients in that are COVID-positive, but only, I know there's only five vents in use, and I think there's maybe, with the two we transferred out today, it's probably down to about six or seven.
Okay. Six or seven of the 13, or?
That are in ICU on critical care, yeah.
Okay. And when you say they're being transferred to a rehab, what kind of rehab do they have to do? I mean?
So we have an acute rehab unit over at our Aurora Grande campus. And with some of the regulatory bodies basically saying, do what you need to do to provide care to your community, they've allowed us to open up a unit within the Santa Maria Hospital. And they've allowed us to open it up under our acute rehab license. So what that means is they will get several times a day, they'll work with physical therapists, they'll work with speech therapists, occupational therapy, really how to get, what's the new normal and how to really get so that they're getting back to be able to wa, you know, someone who's been in bed for 44 days needs some time to get strong again, get those muscles strong again, be able to walk, talk, take care of themselves feeding-wise and everything. So that's what that unit's for.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This'd be a question probably for Dr. Robertson, but as, as you know, there's a lot of talk going on about reopening the state and, of course, our community. And I, I think there's, there's concern about that. And there's some concern certainly by me personally about that. And I, and I worry that people are going to be real excited about the reopening of the economy and our society. And we get out there and start mingling, and we don't know. We don't know what the window is that somebody might have been infected, and the infected person likely doesn't know either. So in this reopening, the COVID-19 virus is not gone. It's not absent from our society. It's there. It's, it's out there. It's very much alive out there. We're just opening it up with a, with a, I guess, a guess, or a statistical data saying that, well, the odds are that you won't get it if you go back out there and you, you have some level of interaction. But if there's a mistake, the odds are 100% that you do get it. So I just, I just think that I want to hear from somebody in the medical field that, yes, there's a reopening being considered, but the virus is still there. It's still very much alive in our, in our society today. Is that correct?
You're absolutely right, Councilman Cordero. And it's important for the public to understand that as we start to make some changes in, in how we reopen society, that this isn't like flipping a light switch on, it's like just turning the dimmer up ever so slightly. Because you're exactly correct, the virus is still there. We're still seeing cases come into our hospital each and every week. And so continuing with social distancing, even if we're starting to open up some businesses, will be important. If you can't social distance effectively using a source control such as a mask when you're out in public is, is important if you can't keep that space. And then hand hygiene is always key. Most people are not going to get this from being in the same vicinity as someone else. They're going to get this from touching a surface that someone else has touched and then touching their face without cleaning their hands. And so keeping your hands clean continues to be a very important and effective measure in preventing transmission.
One other comment, too. One thing that I think is, I'm, I'm proud of, in Santa Barbara County as well as in San Luis County, some of you may have read their reopening plan that they, they issued last week. But both counties have gotten multiple physicians on their reopening team. And Dr. Ritter is an infectious disease physician, one of our physicians, and he has been active with both counties on advising how to reopen, along with Dr. Kevin Ferguson, who's taking it from the testing side, because of course, testing is important, too. That's going to be how we identify people who have it. So absolutely, you're absolutely right about the fact that we have to continue with social distancing and masking and all the things that we've put in place. But I feel good that we have really solid medical advice that's helping every step of the way on reopening.
Thank you very much. I just have this fear that everybody has the same feeling that I have, and I'd like to run out and grab my grandkids and hug them. We can't. We just can't. It's, there's, there's still some danger out there. And I want to be able to convey that as much as we can as the city council, that, that we need to still watch ourselves, and maybe for some time to come. So thank you both very much.
I guess, I'm thinking, and that, all the exercises we've gone through, and so we will have the flu coming up again, whatever flu that is, A or B, or whatever virus comes up again. So how, this is going to change, then, the, what the policy, I'm sure, at the hospital? Because I know a couple of years ago, when my husband was in there, just people would just come in and visit, and 61,000 people died that year. It just sticks in my mind. And that's a lot of people, and nobody thought anything about it because it was just the flu. But now we have this that's just, maybe has enlightened a lot of people? So do you see any, I'm sure you see changes that you will be doing, doing next year and the year after?
And part, part of moving forward is making sure that we're very vigilant in monitoring this. Testing is a big component of that, making sure that the public's aware of looking for certain signs and symptoms and getting to a facility or a place where they can be tested early. If someone shows up to our emergency room in respiratory distress and needs to go to the critical care unit, that's really looking back two weeks. That's when the transmission took place. And so, and so it's too late at that point. And so making sure that everyone is on board in the medical community, within the public health sectors, to, to, to get the message out that we have to be vigilant. Just because we're starting to see some business opening doesn't mean we can't forget about all the other activities that we need to be doing to prevent transmission.
You know, I was just going to say, too, you're absolutely right, though. I think we're all, we all have learned a lot more about how transmission occurs, and no matter what, social distancing is probably going to be a mad, a part of our lives, possibly from here on out, as well as sanitizing, washing hands constantly, all of that prevents not only this, but it prevents other flus and illnesses and colds and everything, so.
Dr. Moats, you had a question?
Yeah, I've got a question. Ms. Anderson, I was looking at the medical staff report that came out today, and I think I noticed that Aurora Grande Hospital has no patients with COVID-19. How is that?
Correct. So basically, anyone that came into Aurora Grande Hospital was tested, and if they were found to have COVID-19 and needed hospitalization, they were transferred to, to Santa Maria Campus, where we have 24-hour, round-the-clock intensivists. So we just felt it was a better environment to keep the patient in. I will also say, though, that San Luis County and the five cities area and all really has not, if you look at the numbers, they have not experienced the same level of COVID cases that we have here in Santa Maria. So they also have not had that many cases, period.
My second question is about blood antibody testing. I've heard that Quest is offering antibody tests, which you can get by making an appointment, paying $120, available now. Is that true?
I believe that's true. I've heard that same thing. We have an antibody test, too, that we're starting to roll out to a few people, starting to, to do more and more of that testing. Part of the problem, what I think Dr. Ferguson would say, who's our pathologist and head of lab, what he would say is that the antibody testing has not been, you know, they, they found a lot of errors within the antibody testing. And so he feels like it's getting stronger and stronger. He's feeling much more confident with today's antibody testing than where it was at even a couple of weeks ago. So I think you're going to see more and more of that happening. The thing is, is mainly the antibody testing is just really more for gathering information more than anything. Because if somebody shows up as having the antibodies, you don't know anything else except that they have the antibodies. So do they have COVID-19 now? Did they have it two months ago? You know, so that's, we will be using that to gather information about our community more than anything else.
Everyone wants to know.
I know.
Everybody's had some kind of URI sometimes.
Dr. Moats, could you please speak into the mic? Because we have to record.
I guess I should turn it on.
That would help, too.
Okay. My third question, and this is probably to Dr. Robertson, is that it seems that nationwide statistics show that about half of the deaths from COVID-19 occur from nursing homes or facilities where seniors who are immobile or have comorbidities live. Are we doing anything to secure our facilities here in Santa Maria from the risk of people bringing in the virus from the outside, such as the workers?
Yeah. From day one, at our Marion Extended Care Center, we put in very strict requirements in terms of employees coming in, in terms of closely monitoring patients that were already in the facility to ensure that we didn't get any sort of community transmission within our extended care center.
Have there been any COVID-19 positive people at Marion Extended Care?
We've moved a couple there in an isolated area for post-acute services after the hospital. They've been through the hospital.
Yeah, to my knowledge, we haven't had anyone diagnosed with COVID-19 in our extended care center.
That's correct.
Ms. Soto.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. It seems like the virus is disproportionately impacting people of color. Why is that? And might those be the reasons why we see higher numbers in Santa Maria?
Well, I think it's difficult to say, and over the next 24 months, I don't think you'll see another disease process studied retrospectively as much as you will see COVID-19 studied. And so we know that patients that have certain chronic conditions, whether it's diabetes, hypertension, other types of issues, possibly obesity, tend to be more likely to be hospitalized and have more complex disease courses. We also know statistically that those disease profiles impact lower socioeconomic classes disproportionately than others. And so when you start to tie these together, you may see certain patterns emerge in certain communities. And I know outside of California, for instance, in Detroit or in Louisiana, we've seen African-American populations disproportionately affected by this in terms of serious disease. There's no indication that a certain race is more likely to catch COVID-19, but certainly those that have more comorbidities tend to do poorly and are more likely to be hospitalized.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you so much for being here again.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Our thought, we can have Brian with the county next, and then Bobby's more on what this all means to our economy. We can wrap up with him.
Good evening, Mayor, you know, and council members. You know, one of the things about going last is everyone takes your material, so. But I can add maybe some, obviously answer some questions and offer a little bit of added information. Just one thing, so I'm with the sheriff's office, and early on in the COVID-19 response by Santa Barbara County, the county chose to go into a unified command system to respond to it. And the unified commands made up of the sheriff's office, county fire, public health, and the county CEO's office. And each one of those offices is assigned to unified, or incident commanders to the incident. So that was our command structure. Like I said, I can add in some of the information. One of the questions that you had were, how many patients in the hospital? Now, countywide, as of today, we have 37 patients in the hospital and county hospitals, and 11 are in ICU right now. And like was said, 93 are active cases in the county right now. In regards to testing, as Chief Champion mentioned, the Santa Maria testing site opened up today, and each site eventually, or each site's assigned 132 tests a day. So eventually, we'll be doing 396 tests a day countywide, in addition to what the private healthcare providers and hospitals are providing. At least the stats for today and yesterday is that they had full appointments in the Santa Maria location. Eventually, on Thursday, the Santa Barbara location will open up, and on Friday, the Lompoc location will open up. And so there'll be seven-day coverage, and the time will be from 7:00 in the morning to 19, or to 7:00 PM to allow for various people's work hours to be able to make it into the testing sites. And also, the Santa Maria site will work from, go from Wednesday through Sunday, once they get the other sites started. Just for information, the website is IHI dot C-A-R-E slash C-O-V-I-D-T-E-S-T-I-N-G for the website. And then again, for people listening, the phone number to make appointment is 888-634-1123. After you get your test, it's about two days to get your test results, and then if you're positive, you'll receive a call notifying that you're positive, but also you'll receive a second call from county health talking about the positive test results. And then they'll assign contact trace investigators to talk to you to see what people you've had contact with, to do that investigation to ensure that we can talk to the people that have also had contact with that person. And then depending on, there's housing available, depending on if a person can isolate themselves, who they live with, and that information that the contact tracers will do. So we have housing available for people that live in a congregate setting in their house, or they're homeless, or don't have housing options. So the county's made arrangements to make that possible throughout the county for housing capacity. Other than that, with the, the big question is, when are we gonna reopen the county or the world, technically? So it seems to change day to day, depending on what the governor's information is. Right now, he's sort of made up a roadmap, and some of the key matrix that they talk about is the stability of hospitalizations, personal protective equipment inventory, healthcare surge capacity, testing capacity, contact tracing capability, and then the guidance from public health. And so as the counties individually go and the state goes and starts complying, and it looks good in those areas, the government is gonna start opening things. So as the governor stated yesterday, we're gonna move to stage two, which is the lower-risk workplaces, and we're gonna open those up on Friday. Those would be expanded retail with curbside pickup and associated manufacturing supply chains. So those would be examples of those, would be bookstores, clothing stores, sporting goods, and florists. As we go through, some workplaces that aren't included per the state are seated dining at restaurants, shopping malls, and offices where you can't telecommute. As we go into that, it's sort of a soft opening of the stage two. As we go deeper into the stage, the state is going to leave it up to the individual counties, or the counties can come in regionally if they attest to certain, meeting certain requirements. And right now, we're waiting towards the end of the week to get a better picture on what those requirements are, and then if the county public health can attest to, we're gonna, we're meeting those matrix and requirements. So we're waiting just as much as everyone else for those daily press conferences and information from California Department of Public Health to see what we need to meet to start opening up that area. And then also, as part of our planning, we also have to have a plan that if all of a sudden, as we release businesses, we start seeing a spike in hospitalizations, ICUs, deaths, and positives, then what do we do to sort of close some things in to try to control the spread of the virus? Let's see. Other than that, anyone have any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Lieutenant, I noticed that in the, in the, both the governor's speeches and the video here, that first responders are a part of that early testing. Is that something that's automatic? Are we testing all our first responders? Or is this something that is an elective thing on the part of each individual deputy or police officer, or fireperson, or whatever?
So for most of the time, public safety was in the tier-two area, and it was testing of public safety as a priority if they're symptomatic. Some of the confusion comes in if someone's asymptomatic or not showing symptoms, you get them tested. And some public safety has been tested that were asymptomatic. The only process and the only thought of testing asymptomatic people, whether it's public safety or anyone, is the, the testing is a point-of-time testing. So someone could be negative at the time they do the test, but tomorrow they could be positive. So that's why we haven't seen a mass testing of asymptomatic people. Now, what the governor's plan is in the rolling out of these testing sites, these community-wide testing sites, is to try to get into that area where we're testing a lot more people and we have that testing capability. The problem was, over the last several weeks, we've slowly been growing out that testing capability with the test kits and the labs being able to test. So right now, we have tested some public safety. Unfortunately, some public safety personnel have tested positive for COVID-19 over the last two months. But I think a lot of people are looking towards the antibody testing, and as the doctor was talking about, that antibody testing's getting more and more effective, and additionally, that antibody testing will get rolled out more also.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Moats?
Lieutenant, I had a question about people concerned about their hair. You know, a lot of women my age are finding out now what their hair really looks like, because they've got like about three-quarters of gray, and they're anxious to get their hair colored. And of course, like, I'm anxious to get my hair cut. So what's the status on hair care, salons and barbers?
So that's probably a pretty common question that everyone asks, and right now, it's in the later stages of it. Right now, the, from county public health perspective in a lot of the counties, is at what point, we're sort of looking at the governor's plan of releasing businesses and not being able to go against the governor's, because he put out a statewide health order. And right now, unfortunately, hair salons, barbers are higher in that stage, so I can't tell you when those will come into effect, unfortunately. We're hoping the next week or two, we can, as we get more information, we can identify more businesses to open.
Okay. As a follow-up question on that. So barbers are considered nonessential, and therefore, I guess by the governor's directive, can't practice. Nevertheless, they are practicing. Has there been any attempt by any county authority? Or, I know the city of Santa Maria is not aggressively shutting down barber shops, but what's the status on actually doing things like closing them down? Or I've heard some places, they're even gonna suspend their license to barber if they keep open.
So Santa Barbara County's tried to take the stance of concentrate on educating the businesses, and when we've received complaints, whether they're in the city jurisdictions or the county jurisdictions, we've received those complaints through the call center or through various other county or city departments, and we send someone out there to not so much do an enforcement action, but do a educational talk with the businesses. And, you know, obviously, you know, we do hear and people see driving around businesses open, and as we get those complaints, we go out and give them a warning, because by far, the interest definitely is to try to educate, because, I mean, we understand that, you know, businesses need to be open to survive. But unfortunately, with the governor's health order, that several businesses can't be open. So hopefully, through just education, the businesses will stay shut.
Ms. Soto.
Thank you. We've been receiving a lot of complaints from people about folks not either maintaining social distancing while inside essential businesses or wearing face coverings. The face coverings one has also, has been one that I've heard a lot. Can you tell me more about what the county stance is on face coverings and any recommendations on how we can, I mean, I know we're doing what we can to inform the public, but I'm curious to hear your thoughts.
So right now, based on the county health officer's order, it's a recommendation for face covering, so it's not a violation of law not to use a face covering. I know some city jurisdictions within the county are moving towards deciding on making face coverings mandatory. Right now, just as part of the health order in food service, they need to have, it's mandatory that they have face coverings. The social distancing side, I know law enforcement, you know, we've heard a lot about the beaches and the trailheads and different high-traffic areas. We've had law enforcement through the city police departments and the sheriff's office advising people, educating people or reminding them, because we've definitely heard a lot about social distancing. But really, like I said, we would rather educate people, warn them, than do a citation or arrest or anything like that. So we found that as we put, for example, the beaches, the beach communities and unincorporated beach communities, we've put extra law enforcement out in those areas to advise people in the, out at the beach to make sure they maintain proper social distancing. And for the most part, they've been cooperative, and for those groups that were together, as soon as they got advised, they separated. So I think as we go further through this, you know, people are getting tired in their houses, and they want to get out and start, you know, the weather's getting better and better. So we'll continue doing the warning, and then as we open up the area, then, you know, we'll put out different orders.
Thank you. Just a follow-up question. Why is it that the county has made it, or public health officer has made it a recommendation and not a mandate for the face coverings?
So they felt, based on their medical expertise and the recommendations, is that's what they were comfortable with putting out in their order as of right now. And I will tell you that, I mean, just being down there every day and working with public health and the other county departments and the other city stakeholders, that question comes up quite often, and it's always being evaluated based on the research that's coming out. I mean, we look at testing and how testing has changed and the different companies coming forth, and as we learn more about the virus, that decision is constantly being evaluated.
I think, I think one of the doctors said that people tend to move the mask, and I know I do, and your hands aren't clean and you're doing this, and anyway.
Wash your hands, don't touch your face.
Wash your hands. Yes, Dr. Moats?
Just one more question. I've heard, I don't know if it's true or not, that Alvinson's is now requiring everybody to put a face mask on before they can gain entrance into the supermarket. Do they have a legal right to do that?
Yes. Yes. I mean, because businesses have the ability to do it, and there's several other businesses in the county that are instituting that. And that could come up later on in future orders on how we open up more and more nonessential businesses, or that have been deemed nonessential. As we open them up, they'll, they might be included in the order that once you go inside or as you're standing in line or so forth, that face coverings will be mandatory.
Yes, Mr. Stillwell.
Madam Mayor and council members, following up on Dr. Moats' question, too, there are a couple of things going on regulatorily now. So right now, we're in the period of essential business versus nonessential, and essential businesses are able to determine what they need to do in order to meet the social distancing and the other requirements with PB, whether it's masks being required or not. And then, as Brian mentioned, as we go into the phase reopening, it'll start having reopening of nonessential businesses, and we're seeing in the draft, Paul reopening of non-essential businesses and we're seeing in the draft, um, policy documents, both that San Luis has and Santa Barbara is developing, that a key part of the reopening phases will be requirement of masks and requirement of social distancing, other PPE, Plexiglas markings on the floor. So even though right now they're not necessarily mandated, masks are not necessarily mandated in this county, um, the businesses can choose to do it if they need to do it, as we have here in, for our work as essential functions. And, but as you start seeing the phase reopening, in order for a business to be able to reopen, it's going to have to demonstrate that they're able to meet those social distancing criteria and/or masks being part of that.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Brian. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Stillwell.
And I think, um, so next we have, um, thanks, Brian. So we have, um, HDL, uh, Brian Youngs, uh, the principal of HDL, he's been a 20-year municipal government professional. He's familiar with Santa Maria, but also, uh, works with HDL that has about 400 clients statewide focusing on sales tax advice and tracking the sales taxes, collecting them, doing a lot of, of the administration of sales tax for cities in the, in the state. So they have a strong expertise of sales tax trends, uh, citywide or statewide and an understanding of how sales tax works and flows to the cities within the state. So, um, he gave this presentation, again, as I mentioned, to the Economic Development Commission and I thought there was a lot of good general information that would be helpful for the public more broadly to see and for the council to be familiar with. And if Brian's on the line, he can continue with the presentation.
Great. Just a, just a real quick check. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, wonderful, thank you. City council staff, uh, all the attendees, as Senator Stillwell mentioned, uh, HDL, we have over 400 clients statewide. We focus exclusively on cities, counties and special districts. Uh, while we, um, have a breadth of revenue analysis and, and different streams that we analyze, the focus tonight is really on sales tax specifically, given the shutdown and the immediate impacts that it's going to have on the city's local revenue stream there. Um, all of the data that we're going to be looking at and the different trends is really honed in while in Santa Maria, we've got an 8.75% sales tax rate. Um, 1% of that comes back to the city's general fund. We know that through Measure U, um, there's an additional one cent that comes back specifically related to public safety, but the data and the trends that we're looking at are really going to be, uh, on the, uh, initial 1% as part of the statewide base. Real quick, just a recap of where we've come from. Uh, statewide, you can see here, top graph, calendar year, since the great recession, you can see the dip that happened, uh, from '07 through '08 and '09. Um, and then the trend and the long, uh, positive recovery we've had since, been now almost, uh, you know, 10 full calendar years since the, uh, since the great recession, um, and then this hit, but, uh, also the last 13 quarters. What you see there are the calendar year quarters and it's more of a seasonality effect that we have within sales tax. Uh, the trend usually with first quarter, which is, uh, January, February, March and the period that, in which the shutdown started, uh, usually tends to grow through the summer as people are out and about, spending, buying cars and eating at restaurants, leading up to the peak of fourth quarter. And that's really within our data. That's the last full quarter of data that we have. And by all accounts, the, uh, holiday shopping period of 2019, uh, was phenomenal. We saw great growth. Uh, there were a lot of positive things to focus on there. Um, the next set of data that we're waiting for, uh, within about the next month will be relative to first quarter, 2020, and again, that's where we saw the, uh, the initial parts of the shutdown. Within the data itself and, and what we do with, uh, as much data as we have, was we start to, we look at the statewide, but then we segment it into major industry groups to really kind of, uh, dig into the weeds a little bit to see what are the, what are the underlying trends. Uh, the top line there, you can see general consumer goods are largest single category statewide, uh, the positive growth since the recession, but from 2018 to 2019, had already started to kind of, uh, peak out and then dipped down just a little bit. I'll talk, I'll talk more specifically there. Uh, the orange line that you see kind of going there and, and for the most part, it was our second largest category, uh, autos and transportation. So here, it's really think the auto dealerships and leasing activity and that too, from 2018 to 2019, had started to already peak and we saw a little bit of a downward trend. So, um, coming into this, we were, uh, we were already starting to forecast, um, if not a recession, at least a slowdown in economic growth or sales tax revenue growth. On that prior slide, with regards to general consumer goods, um, with that, think of traditional brick and mortar stores and you see here on this graph, we, uh, we separate out the brick and mortar stores with online shopping. Uh, online shopping and the tax revenue from that comes through a different revenues, uh, category, it's the county and state pools. If I go back to the prior slide, you'll see that's the blue line that has dramatically jumped, uh, from 2018 to 2019. Um, with that and on here, those two circled areas, the lower one, uh, the implementation of AB 147 and, and out-of-state online retailers requiring, uh, them to collect and remit local sales tax has really increased, um, the total taxes collected from online sales, thereby also having a, a bit of a impact on brick and mortar stores as shoppers, uh, transition. We'll also kind of talk, I'll talk about this trend as it, as we talk about the impacts of the shutdown and once to come, what we see coming afterwards, because those trends may continue, uh, as consumers start to find their way, uh, around to get the, get the goods that they want. Uh, locally here, uh, comparing, again, calendar year with San Luis Obispo and Paso Ruelas. My apologies, uh, within our data, the city of Santa Barbara itself, our his, our historical data isn't 100% complete and so, uh, I left them off the chart, but what you can see is still kind of that same story, uh, there in Slow and Paso Ruelas had peaked in 2019, started to kind of trend off as they too are heavy on general consumer goods and autos. Um, yourself, I think it was really kind of the, um, the onboarding or the opening of Inos Ranch, uh, really helping keep that line a little bit more, um, to the positive this, this last, uh, calendar year compared to, uh, other agencies. Now, here we are with the, uh, with the coronavirus and, uh, our forecast, what we see coming, uh, when we put our heads together and really analyze first statewide, and that's what we'll see today, but what we do with our forecast for every agency or every client that we have, is we start statewide, but then we really bring it down to the local level to say, for Santa Maria, we'll analyze exactly the businesses that you have and how that trend may not be the same as statewide. And if not, then, then we'll, we'll dig in and work with city staff to figure out what our forecast for Santa Maria specifically is. But for this, it's statewide, um, forecast that we have and we've had for about the last month is we anticipate the shelter in place directive to continue through the end of May. Here we are at the beginning of May and, uh, we've already, we're already starting to see businesses allowed to reopen, talk over the next couple of weeks and we've heard it, uh, through the presentations earlier tonight, uh, the businesses will start opening up more businesses via the governor's plan. And so our forecast, even though businesses are going to start to open in May, it'll be, uh, it won't be a full reopening. We know it won't go back to the way it was, uh, just with social distancing, restaurants not back to full capacity. So, uh, it, uh, we still feel like an end of May type of scenario works within our, our forecast at this point. Also, that second bullet point there on the left, the virus runs its course by September in that we don't have a return in the fall to where a shutdown would be needed. Uh, that, uh, that scenario, that assumption that comes with it, a lot of different, uh, different attributes and assumptions that need to be made in order to figure out what that looks like. And right now, we don't feel like we have enough data and information to support forecasting that way. So it's pretty much, uh, that it runs a course and you'll see that, uh, with regards to unemployment, household debt, there are going to be some lags on the economy coming out of this. Businesses aren't going to completely reopen, so our forecast is a continued impact all the way through the end of calendar year 2020, uh, with then a more flattening period, a no longer decrease as we turn the calendar year into '21. Uh, businesses with tight margins like restaurants and those carrying heavy debt loads like large retailers and their, their storefronts, um, they may not be able to recover coming out of this and, uh, that'll, that'll have its, its impact. Also, the stimulus checks, we're not hearing that those are providing, um, tremendous amount of growth, uh, if you will, as far as new sales tax revenue. It is allowing folks that are, that maybe had to go on unemployment, pushed unemployment, uh, helping them stay, um, level or consistent, but we fully anticipate that the discretionary income that folks had before the shutdown really has been diminished. Here, statewide sales tax trend, um, given those last few quarters, right, leading up to the solid bar there, fourth quarter of 2019, the dramatic drop going from first quarter, which normally happens, again, that seasonality effect, it normally decreases in first quarter, uh, after the fourth quarter, but we saw, we're going, we're expecting about a seven and a half percent decrease there in one Q, continuing down two Q, that end of May, um, much more dramatic, 36%. Um, also, it's, uh, it's kind of tough here when we talk about different percentages because we really look at all of the individual categories here and then take the overall, uh, results. So, um, when we break down each category, uh, we give a different percentage. Uh, autos, as you see at the top left, um, especially in that second quarter, we're anticipating a statewide decrease of about 55%. Um, and an end of May scenario is about two-thirds of a quarter, so our starting point for a lot of this was kind of in the 60% range. Um, autos, we felt like, given, um, auto leasing activity, uh, people just still paying their bills will help support the revenue stream. Also, used cars and car dealerships like CarMax probably still selling online as people need to replace their vehicles if they have a job and, and come across at an instance where they have to replace a vehicle. Some activity's still going to happen, um, but, uh, but dramatically impacted. As you go down the list, you'll see restaurants at the lower part there. Obviously, um, full expected closures, especially through April, uh, very minor activity on quick service and some takeout, uh, at casual dining restaurants. Um, and then the reopening with social distancing's still going to have an impact, uh, as we, as we come out of this. If you shift over to the right, third one down, general consumer goods, um, 45% decrease because while we have the family apparel stores like TJ Maxx and Marshalls that, uh, are going to be closed, have been closed, um, Target, Costco, Walmart, Sam's Club and the like are still open and selling, uh, especially there in the month of, at the end of the month of March, uh, while people kind of ramped up for the shutdown, uh, we're really highly anticipating what, uh, what one Q is going to look like, uh, to then give us an idea of, of two Q, but this is kind of our starting point with regards to, uh, to the second quarter. We've been asked quite a bit, how does this compare with the great recession or how do we see this comparing to the great recession? And as of right now, it doesn't. Uh, we've never shut down the economy so quickly, whether it be the US economy or California. Um, the great recession, as a reminder, was by, uh, by technical, uh, technical stance, uh, 19 months long. And as I'll show you in the data coming up for our major categories, the declines were almost two years, uh, in the making to the bottom. Here, uh, with the, uh, um, with the, what's probably going to be the great shutdown, if you will, the sudden immediate drop gets us to the bottom and then we slowly build our way up. So it's a much steeper drop immediately than what, uh, what we saw with the great recession. Here, doing some comparative analysis, uh, historical with general consumer goods, uh, historical at the top graph, graph, the, uh, the blue line there, um, the quarters you'll see called out, as, uh, as it gets towards zero and then goes negative, that's about the third quarter 2007. Um, and then that continual decline, and it really didn't start to see us come up from the depth until third quarter 2009. So again, two long years going through continual decline. Down below, uh, our current, current results plus our projected, our forecast, they're on the red line, much steeper down to the bottom of two Q 20. And then as of now, it's still, we talked about it, uh, negative or decreases through the end of the calendar year, that's really the third quarter and the fourth quarter, still seeing declines. There's going to be some impacts, um, but eventually, we're anticipating a little bit closer to zero faster than what we saw with, uh, the great recession. This same, uh, same scenario, if you will, autos and transportation, so new auto dealerships, used auto dealerships. You can see blue line at the top starts to hit zero and go negative about second quarter '07, kind of go all the way to the back, all the way to the, to the right, and then we start to come up in about second quarter '09, even third quarter '09 is still negative. Um, again, two years there. Down below, what we see happening, much quicker to the bottom with a, a little steeper recovery. Restaurants and hotels, uh, this one took a long time to finally go negative, uh, compared to the discretion, really the discretionary spending on autos and, um, and general consumer goods. Uh, restaurants didn't really go negative until third quarter, and we saw the rebound in third quarter '09, almost fourth quarter '09. So restaurants only impacted for about a year and finally got there. Again, same V shape on the return, um, much deeper with the, uh, with the great shutdown, but a, a quicker recovery coming out. One, uh, big lag that, uh, that we're keeping our eye on, um, as you can see on the left, US household debt returning to pre-recession highs and exceeding, uh, mortgage in the blue, the bigger, uh, the red that's grown since the, uh, the great recession, student loans and student debt. And we, we have heard about that for years. Um, how much of a lag is that going to create, uh, for those that are just joining the workforce and, uh, coming out of college with debt? Um, how much is this going to hurt that, those recovery percentages and the businesses, uh, you know, kind of getting back up to speed? On the right, corporate debt, um, has its ebbs and flows, recessionary periods going back to the early 90s through the 2000 and the dot-com and, uh, 9/11 tragedy that really caused that next recession. Uh, the great recession, the bigger period, like we talked about, two long years, much bigger bar there, uh, corporate debt though, has returned to, uh, to those prior highs. And is that going to hurt businesses and business spending that also contributes to sales tax? Is it going to hurt, uh, the recovery efforts overall, uh, for us? So, um, to kind of put a lot of that together and some bullet points here for you of what it looks like, restaurants and hotels, uh, currently closed, they're going to need time to staff and stock up coming out of this, so that's going to lag, uh, for their recovery. Summer travel, expect to be limited. Um, more staycations, gas, by all accounts, gas prices will remain low through the end of the calendar year. There's no expectation that crude oil is going to jump back to where it was. Uh, there's still a large excess supply of oil, so gas prices should remain fairly low, allowing, while we reopen, uh, travelers to come out to the coast or come towards the coast or even up and down, uh, the state, which I think they're, um, by way of Highway 1, one, you guys, uh, city of Santa Maria is kind of prone to take, still take advantage of people as they travel through the summer, uh, just looking to get out of the house and being, uh, locked up for, uh, so long. The auto industry, last bullet point there on the left, uh, we are anticipating, we're waiting to see if, uh, the federal government will kind of push for a cash flow hunkers two program to really help inspire buyers to, uh, change, swap out cars and, uh, that will, uh, enhance our sales tax revenue for our auto dealers. So we're kind of waiting to, waiting to see there. Building construction, um, a very interesting category and group for us, along with restaurants, trying to figure out what's the return going to be. Um, during the summer months, those that have not been economically hurt by the, uh, by the shutdown, uh, might still choose to do renovations if home values, uh, remain solid. There's, uh, with this being a little bit quicker of a shutdown, um, to weather the post-storm, um, again, different than the great recession and how that impacted, uh, property values especially, the length of time that we were in it, um, really hurt people's ability to sell their house, make their payments, uh, unemployment benefits eventually run out. And so that's how we're seeing this, just be a little bit different. If home values this summer aren't as impacted, then, uh, there may be, um, increased residential construction and then builders will feel a little bit more confident to, uh, put investments and energy into, uh, new construction, which especially in the central into new construction, which especially in the Central Coast is always needed locally. That was my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Any questions? Great presentation. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you, Bobby. And as we're entering into our budget season, we'll keep close eyes on the information HDL's gathering for us. As Bobby indicated, it is changing quickly and doesn't compare with a lot of the other experiences we've had, because we haven't had to shut down this abrupt, so it's something for us to keep close eye on. And I think one point, he had mentioned that one of the main differences is the amount of consumer debt and corporate debt going into this versus the last recession. And we were on the CalPERS webinar today, and that was one point CalPERS made as well, is ahead of the 2008 recession, they were nearly 100% funded going into this, the Great Shutdown, I guess it's called now, they were at 70% funded. So we'll see, I agree with Bobby. I mean, that's a big difference to see if that underlying debt is going to change the way this recovers or prolong the recession that we have coming out of that. And so with, segueing to the CalPERS issue, we will have Bartel and Associates come to our next meeting and give an update. As you recall, the council authorized us to do an actuarial study of our pension fund and our pension liability, and they'll be able to present that at the upcoming meeting and then talk about the latest impacts CalPERS has had as a result of this shutdown.
Thank you. A lot of good information tonight. Thank you. Thanks for the updates, and the next will be a report by the city manager.
Sure. Yeah, just building on that, so the next meeting is on May 19th. Thank you, mayor and council members, for the next council meeting. And so we will have, we do plan to have that CalPERS pension liability analysis. We'll have our third quarter financial report. We plan to have another COVID update as things continue to evolve. Hopefully, you feel these have been helpful. I think we've seen over the period of time that there's a lot of moving parts, a lot of things change quickly. Go back and look at our notes from when the shutdown first started, and there's a lot different with what we know about the virus and the way testing has evolved and the way the analyses have been able to develop. So we hope to bring back another COVID update. And then we have an authorization from the council to execute documents for the renovation of Veterans Memorial Park. And we had mentioned offline a couple times that we were pleased that we were one of only about 70 cities in the state to receive funding for our Veterans Memorial Park, which is much needed to be renovated. And we have, I believe, $2.3 million or so from the state funds to be able to fix that park. And so we're proud to be able to be selected for it, and we hope the council will approve the execution of the documents. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll go to oral reports of council members. Dr. Moats, do you want to start?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, I have something to report. On April 27th, I attended telephonically the investment analysis report for the city of Santa Maria. And actually, it was a pretty good report, you know, as interest rates crater, our previously held bonds went up in value. So that was good news.
Thank you. Ms. Soto.
Yes, Madam, this is on, yes, Madam Mayor, on April 22nd, I attended the phased reopening and recovery plan, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A few things. I did the Ben Hayes Show. I also signed on, actually because my wife had actually done it, but, and listened to some updates on the Brown Act that was not really scheduled specifically for us. But it will comfort all of you to know that the Brown Act covers not only her field but ours, and it would appear to me that our city attorney is keeping us in perfect line. It was quite an impressive showing for about two hours. And then I attended the, both sessions of the lunches offered at Marion Medical Center, both the noon feeding and the 7:00 PM feeding for our first responders and nurses and fire, police, and these kind of things. So that was a great event, and that's it for me.
Thank you. So, you know, I was thinking a lot of people, and after I finished, I was thinking, you know, that we're so lucky to live in an area where we have fresh vegetables, but the people that bring the fresh vegetables to us are such, so important. And they're out there working in the fields, and yet somebody's got to be taking care of the children. So it's somehow, you know, I'm, this is just thinking off the top of my head, but somehow, these schools have to start opening because the parents are working, and these kids can't be left home alone. And I, and, you know, we'll figure out how to do that in a safe way, but it's so, they're such a valuable commodity to our community, and we're so lucky to live here. Now, we may have to start growing our own beef and our own pigs, but we've got great vegetables in our valley, and so thankful for the people who work so hard in the fields.
Yeah, Waterfield's on the phone.
Out of sight, out of mind. Ms. Waterfield.
Ditto on my part, too. Yes, the reportable items I have are the last two Fridays, I did the Rick Blair Meyer Show with Stu Anderson and two other physicians that had attended. On the last Friday, I attended the Marion barbecue that our great firefighters had done for Marion Hospital. I believe they served 1,500 lunches, and they started at 5:00 in the morning and did not end till late in the evening. And I also attended California Water Authority meeting as well, and that, those are my reports.
Thank you very much. I didn't see you here, so I completely forgot about you. Okay, April 22nd, I recorded the day of prayer message. That'll be Thursday, that'll be virtual day of prayer. And then I did the Marion Foundation Board of Directors meeting on the teleconference, and the phased reopening and recovery plan call with parties from San Luis Obispo, and then later that day, did the Santa Maria Key Leaders Check-In Teleconference. And so I'm meeting with key leaders in Santa Maria and also with key leaders in San Luis Obispo, meeting with public health. Sometimes it's hard to keep the meeting straight when you're in an office situation, you're sitting here, and you've got all these people around a table, and you can sort of remember, but you're sitting in front of your computer the whole time, and it's like all these meetings sort of mashed together. On the 23rd, I did the Regional Early Action Plan Grant Program allocation formulas teleconference. Later that day, I did the legislative briefing call. And on the legislative briefing call, we have all the mayors, a couple of the supervisors from the county, Salud Carbajal is always there, and our assembly person, Ms. Lamone, and Mr. Cunningham, and Hannah Beth, they're always there on these conference calls. And this is, these are really good, and they give a great input. On the 24th, I did the Central Coast Housing Working Group meeting, teleconference, did the Assemblyman Cunningham briefing and teleconference, and Marion Medical Center and Public Safety Appreciation barbecue, and that was very nice to see the parade and everyone there. On April 28th, I did the Santa Barbara County Leaders Teleconference, and did our Rotary Teleconference, did the Status Update County Reopening Webinar with Econ Alliance, did the California Women, no, I didn't do the California Women for Ag. On the 29th, again, I did the Santa Maria Key Leaders Check-In Teleconference. On the 30th, I did the legislative briefing. And on these legislative briefings too, it's great to have the insight of what our assembly people and our senators are hearing in Sacramento. On May 1st, did the Assemblyman Cunningham briefing call, and the Santa Barbara County Mayor's Zoom meeting with Dave Mullenax was there. May 4th, and Ms. Soto, it always comes up with the mayors on the masking, because we're always asking for it. On May 4th, did the REACH, which is the organization we're working with, Weekly Leaders Call, Reopening, and Beyond. Later that day, did the Santa Barbara County Leaders Call, Reopening the Project. May 5th, did the Ben Hayes Radio Show, and that was it. Any other comments, questions? This meeting is adjourned.